How are you? We're going to call this meeting to order. Sanford School Department, Sanford School Committee, regular meeting. City Council Chairman, Third Floor, City Hall Annex, Monday, August 18, 2025, at 4 o'clock. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have no adjustments that I'm aware of. We can skip to approval of minutes for Monday, June 9, 2025, executive session. Monday, June 9, another executive session, and Monday, June 9, 2025, regular business meeting. I have to abstain because I was not here. Would someone like to make a recommendation?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Paula Seconds, all in favor? Wonderful, thank you. Does not seem like we have any public comments here in person, online, no? All right, or via Zoom. Perfect. I don't believe we had any communications since the last meeting. No committee reports either. All right, and now we'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
First thing is to announce an upcoming field trip. This is an exciting field trip. It's actually an overnight field trip. This is for Sanford Middle School. It's the seventh grade Ecology School Residential Overnight Program, an immersive, hands-on learning opportunity in a state-of-the-art facility for a seventh grade. This is open to all seventh grade students, split into two groups. So it'll be the week... The only challenging part is it's going to be early in the school year. It's going to be the week of September 15. The plan is divide the seventh grade into two groups. The first group will go Monday, the 15th, and Tuesday, the 16th, and stay overnight Monday and Tuesday and come back Wednesday. And then the second group will go Wednesday afternoon, stay overnight Wednesday night, Thursday night, and come back Friday for that. It's an excellent opportunity. You're looking at something where it's a... The scholarship value to per student is somewhere in the neighborhood of $350 for that. So it's a great opportunity. Recently, Governor Mills signed in the Outdoor School for All Maine Students Program into law with the UMaine Extension running the program. There's no state funding to go with the bill, but the Maine Outdoor School for All Networks raised over $500,000 to get the ball rolling. And each partner gets to pick a main school that currently can't afford the three-day outdoor school program for a scholarship, and the Ecology School's first choice was to work with Sanford Middle School, seventh grade, for that. So I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. Looking forward to that. I know Sanford Middle School will be doing a parent night ahead of time. Also, the same night is their open house, to be able to have parents of seventh graders to be able to come back and get an overview. Someone from the program will actually be there to be able to talk about it and answer any questions, so. Excellent opportunity there for our seventh graders. Hiring, hiring update. First off, I want to give a big thank you to all of our hiring committees, all of our administrators and the staff who've been in those hiring committees. Safe to say, I think we're in the best shape, hiring-wise, that we have been in the last few years, definitely, for that. We had a couple candidates for our outreach one-year program at Margaret Chase Smith School who did not accept the position, but we did land on a candidate and offered that position to that person, and she's accepted. So we've got that position filled. There's also a special education teacher at Sanford Pride Elementary that we're interviewing for. We had a resignation in that program in July. We're also looking for a gifted and talented teacher at the elementary level. Our former teacher, Eric Benham, had an opportunity to go to another district closer to home for that. And then there's also some... A few ed tech positions. We've had a couple resignations lately as we're getting close to it. But overall, as I said, I think we're well-positioned for hiring to be able to come and open the school year. So a big thank you to our, as I mentioned, all of our administrators' hiring. It's usually something that we do a good job of getting ahead of that at the end of the school year, but there's always something that comes up throughout the summer for that. Last Thursday, August 21st, the school commi... Wait a minute, am I having the wrong... No. August 14th, last Thursday, August 14th, the school committee had a workshop with all of our school administrators. We've done this the last few years. A big thank you to the school committee for giving up a whole day to be able to come back and meet with all of our schools individually. We have all the elementary schools come together, followed by the middle school, the high school, and SRTC, where they can share... The schools can share their updates to include their school program goals and areas of focus for the school year and good dialogue back and forth between the school. We had met Wednesday as an administrative team. We had our retreat at the Goodall Public Library, the renovated Goodall Public Library. Want to thank them for hosting us, to be able to have our meeting there. We focused on our school goals for the upcoming year. The goals that we have, we've really tried to align those to all of our schools' comprehensive needs assessment, so that that work can dovetail and work closely together as opposed to having separate documents. That comprehensive needs assessment is a requirement for our schools, and that's something that's able for them to be able to follow. The district goals, we tried to align with that. Our first one is climate and culture, really working on creating a sense of belonging, improved in family engagement, positive behavior supports, and enhanced school climate and culture. We're looking to increase our attendance. Obviously, if you do those things, you're going to see that. We have been proud of the work that we've done in attendance and being able to move that forward. As you saw in the school committee workshop last Thursday, we're now digging into that data even a little bit deeper, looking at some of the subgroups for us to be able to do that. And then the other two goals were academically focused, both on our math achievement as well as our literacy achievement, and being able to make sure that we can continue to raise those, that achievement, as well. So appreciate the school committee giving up a whole day. We started at 8:00 in the morning and went right on through until 3:00 in the afternoon and meeting with the groups and good dialogue there for that. Also, want to give an opening of school update. I know that is on everybody's mind, as the calendar now says August. At the administrative level, we're central office level, we're going to meet with all the administrative assistants this Thursday. We've done that in the past and found that to be very helpful and very useful. The Stuff the Bus Main, Wanda Parent and her group will distribute a few free school supplies this Saturday, the 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Curtis Lake Church. Our food service workers, they have their training next Monday, the 25th. Our new teacher orientation for all the new teachers joining the Sanford School Department is a week from tomorrow. That's Tuesday, 26th, as we have all of our onboarding activities for our new teachers. Open house for Grade Nine and new students to Sanford High School is going to be that evening, Tuesday, August 26th. That's 6:00 PM, starting in the Performing Arts Center. We have our staff in-service days. We welcome back all of our staff. We start with the newbies on Tuesday, the 26th, and then we bring everybody else back on Wednesday, the 27th, and Thursday, the 28th. Our open houses also start at that time. Sanford Middle School and SRTC are the first ones out of the gate with open house. That'll be on Wednesday, August 27th. The middle school cuts it up, breaks it up. Fifth and Sixth Grade is from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and Seventh and Eighth Grade is from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And SRTC has their open house for all of their incoming students on Wednesday, August 27th, beginning at 6:00. Our three elementary schools will have their open houses the following day, Thursday, August 28th. Those are all from 5:00 to 6:00 at Carl J. Lamb Sanford Pride Elementary and Margaret Chase Smith School. We always do our best to try to give an opportunity for our students to come in and see their schools and classrooms before the school year begins. First day of school for students in Grades 1 through 9, as well as SRTC, is Tuesday, September 2nd. And then the first day of school for kindergarten and Grades 10 through 12 will be the following day, Wednesday, September 3rd. And then our first day for our pre-K will be Thursday, September 4th. As a method to our madness, as we try to be able to bring people on, especially in that first week of school, we also try to build up the stamina of our students, as well as our staff, in doing that. So that's the... What we're looking at for the opening of school. Want to take this time to thank our custodians and our facilities and maintenance crews for all the work that they've done over the summer in getting our schools ready. That can be challenging because a number of our facilities are used for summer programming, whether that's through the school department or also partnering with the rec. department and being able to do that. So we're in good shape, as the opening of school will be beginning and coming right Also, federal funding and legislative update, just wanted... It's been a little bit of a roller coaster this summer. On June 27th, at the end of June, we received word that the Elementary Secondary Education Act, the federal grant allocations for the 2025-2026 school year, we were alerted that date that the United States Department of Education was reviewing the funding for the grant programs, and decisions had not been made yet to release those funds. Usually, those funds are released always at the beginning of July. And so that was the word that we received. Those programs impacted were Title I, Part C, Migrant Education; Title II, Part A, Supporting Effective Instruction; Title III, Part A, English Language Acquisition; Title IV, Part A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment; and Title IV, Part B, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and also the Adult Education Grants to State. So in Sanford, we... A couple of those grants are really important to us in our funding. Title II, Part A, Supporting Effective Instruction; Title III, Part A, the English Language Acquisition; and Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, as well as Adult Education. So there were some tense times there, that if those were funds that we weren't going to receive, so we'd started to work as an administrative team to start looking at some contingencies. But on July 25th, the U.S. Department of Ed did announce that it was going to release the funding for the current federal and education fiscal year, starting at the end of July. And so we went from worried we weren't going to have those funds to then finding out that we were. One thing I think is to point out that we did know, even with the federal funding allocations that we were expecting, that we were going to be expecting a little bit less in funding than we had in previous years. And so our Title I and Title IV funds for the fiscal year 2026, we came in just over $8,500 less than what we had last year. Title II funds, which has really worked to really focus on a lot of our professional development, that came in just under $25 million less. We did receive an increase, a small increase, for our Title III, English Language Acquisition. That, we got just over $5,700, so an increase from what we had in the previous year. So when you look at all of that, our funding and our titles came in just over $27,000 less. And as I said, that was something, as we were going along and looking at trying to do our best to predict, we were okay with that. And as I said, could have been worse with that. For a while there, we were really concerned if that funding was not going to be released for. And as far as a legislative update, all of the state of Maine legislation has been acted upon until the legislature reconvenes in January. And so I won't go into great detail. There were a number of bills that did receive some funding from the state, but there were a majority of those bills that did not receive funding from the state. And in addition to that, Governor Mills, as part of the process, has also held several bills, which are going to be then acted upon next year in terms of that. So we continue to monitor that through that process. I think the state was bracing for less revenues than expected, and so I think you saw a very cautious approach. And a lot of things, I think, are going to be held or moved over to the next session. So we'll continue to monitor those, and we'll continue to advocate as much as we can in those areas right now that are really important to Sanford School Department and our community. And then, right along with that, it's... We're... One of the things that we're always looking at right now is our enrollment update, because as you know, being a high receiver of state subsidy for us, the things that are important for us is our enrollment, as well as our valuation. And one of the things that we're seeing is we know that the valuation in Sanford has continued to rise, and so when that rises, the expectation of the formula is that you can contribute more locally. And then also, if you're looking at your enrollment decreasing, then you have less people going through the funding formula. So Ann Luer in our office does an excellent job of tracking that. Right now, it's very fluid. It's a very fluid situation. Our attending student count, as of August 15th, was 3,203. Just for comparison's sake, our attending student count last October 1, 2024, which is the number that is used by the state, was 3,228, a difference of 25. We've tried to do our best to estimate through that enrollment how many are going to be counted for subsidy. Remember, some of those students include our acting students, and acting pays us through their contract, so they wouldn't be part of the subsidy, for example. So in our estimate, as of August 15th, is 3,122 students. The subsidy student count that we had last October was 3,149. So that's a difference of 26 students. Right now, we have 26 students less. We'll dig into those numbers, and as I said, it's very fluid. We'll continue. I'll give updates throughout the month of September and October at our school committee meetings. One of the things I think jumps out right at us when you're starting to look at that is we have 180 students signed up right now for kindergarten, registered for kindergarten, which is a nice number, but that number is smaller than what last year's graduating class was at Sanford High School. So even though when you see the enrollment has stayed relatively the same for all of our grades, when you have a large class come out and the one you replace it with is smaller, that's where you're going to see a difference in looking at some of our numbers. So I'll continue to provide those updates as we monitor that, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that our enrollment increases are hold steady. And that's Superintendent's Report.
Great. Any feedback?
Questions?
I have a quick question. You said $27,000 less when you were breaking down the title funding, which we knew was going to be a decrease. That was $27,000 less than last year, which we kind of already calculated a little bit in our budget. That's not $27,000 less than the budget?
Correct.
Correct. The funding we were expecting from our budget. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep. We were... No, that was as we come back, you... We were planning for a decrease, and that has been similar that we've seen the last couple of years. That's not something that is a surprise to us. That has been relatively consistent the last few years, to see those funds decrease.
Essentially, essentially, it panned out as expected versus what we were unsure of.
I think, I think actually, when we looked at it, our number, I think, was actually a little bit less than what we had initially feared or anticipated. So even though it was less, I think we were still initially projected it to be a little bit more than that. Yep.
I just wanted to add about the seventh-grade field trip. I'm super excited about this very expensive gift that our seventh-grade students in the Sanford Middle School has received, so I'm grateful for all of the donors and wherever that came from, because it's really a great opportunity for that class. And I also just wanted to make it like a sidebar comment about the... When we, the school committee, met with the administrators for goal-setting workshop, I was inspired... I don't want to speak for the rest of you, but we all kind of left on a very positive note. We're very excited and just really appreciative of all of the hard work that the schools are doing during the summer. They're not just laying poolside. They're like digging in, making changes, and we really appreciate all that. So thank you. All right. Moving on to the Director's Report. Hello, Mr. B.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm going to start off with just a pre-K update to piggyback on Matt talked about enrollment. Our pre-K enrollment over the summer has been fluid. We've had some moves, daycare changes, and we've had some students move to a special purpose private program because of special education. As slots have opened up, we have worked to fill those slots. Currently, we're working to fill one spot at SPE, and we have four over at CGL that we're working on getting the enrollment information back. By the time the school begins, we will be at full capacity with pre-K. We have a wait list of over 30 kids still on our list, so we'll continue to work to fill that list. Update on staffing for pre-K. The YMCA, the YMCA pre-K teacher Liz Reynolds took a position at the YMCA overseeing the early learning programs at the Y, which is a great move on their part, but that leaves a teacher vacancy for us for pre-K. They have conducted interviews and are working to fill that role, and we're confident that we're going to have somebody in place to begin the school year. Transportation, transportation, the routes are just about final at this time. An email will be sent out to families tomorrow morning, releasing the information for them to access the transportation information through VersaTrans, similar to the process that we've used last year. So the email will be sent tomorrow. On Wednesday, we'll be sending out a news item and posting it on Facebook, and on Thursday, we'll be sending a text message to parents, letting them know that that information is available. Why the staggered approach? It's staggered, so Ledgmere can handle the calls that may come in with questions that folks have in regard to transportation. Just like to say thank you to the Ledgmere staff. They have worked all summer, updating the rosters, working on routes, and we have some good news to report on the transportation front. They have been able to eliminate the double trips for Sanford High School and Sanford Middle School, which should reduce the wait time in the afternoon for both of those locations by about 15 minutes. We've also been able to add a special education bus and one big bus to our routes, which should help improve the overall time at all of our schools for families. With that being said, they do have a contract. They work under a contract, and we are short three drivers at this time. They do have three people training to fill these slots, and they're short three monitors. So what... But with that being said, we're making progress. Over the summer, we did reach out to the district manager to express our displeasure with our current reality in terms of hiring, and they have increased the rates that they're paying their drivers. They're continuing to get out to job fairs, advertising. They're doing all they can to fill those seats, but we're starting to see some movement. Similar in the school department in terms of hiring, they're starting to see some movement at Ledgmere as well. Athletics, as of this afternoon, they have the trips covered that they know about so far. We have two drivers that are designated to athletics this fall, which is similar to the situation we were in last fall. Hopeful, I'm knocking wood, that we'll be able to cover all of those trips. Right now, looking good on that front. Before I go on to the next thing, any questions about pre-K or transportation? The last thing I might update this evening is about an ed tech apprenticeship program with York County Community College. This is an exciting opportunity for our ed tech ones that we have in the district to engage in an apprenticeship program that will move them from a Level 1 certification to an ed tech 2 certification. This is through an apprenticeship program where they will receive 935 hours of technical instruction. 450 of those hours will be in the classroom in their current position, where they will be supervised by a mentor. The mentor will be somebody on our staff, and the mentor will be there, answering questions, providing them support. The remaining 485 hours will be done through coursework through a cohort, so it'll be the same group of people that go through, take the courses together, through a blended learning of online and in-person experience. Currently, there are 11 ed techs in the program, and Sanford has six of those 11 slots. They actually had their first class last week, so this is really an exciting opportunity for our ed techs to further their education. We have worked to identify mentors in our district. The mentors will be... Have a stipend and receive some training that goes along with that. And this is a competency-based program, so it's different than you may go to take a college course and you get a grade. You may learn the skills or you may not learn the skills. In this program that they're working through, they actually have to demonstrate through their placement that they've met the skills. So this is a win for the ed tech, a win for our students, a win for our special education programs. We're really excited in through the opportunity with York County Community College to support our ed techs. And tomorrow, we have a call with the University of Southern Maine, looking at an apprenticeship program to help our ed tech threes that want to become special education teachers. Is there a pathway for them to be able to do that as well? So really, a great opportunity for our staff.
Yeah, we met with your officials from York County Community College early in the summer, talking about this program, and we thought it'd be a good fit and a good match, so we sent it out to all of our ed techs, and we're very pleased with the response that we received. As you mentioned, we're going to have the most people in the program in doing that. So I think it's... Speaks to creativity. It speaks to continuing to be able to adjust to the people's situations and work, and I think it's going to be a win-win. We're going to be able to benefit from that. York County Community College will benefit, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to be our students and staff who benefit.
Any questions?
No, thank you so much. Great update. All right. Next, we have Beth Lambert, Summer Professional Development Overview.
Hi there. Switch name tags so you don't get us confused. So we're on the tail end of our summer professional development. We have had multiple opportunities for staff, excuse me, to recertify in their safety care training this summer. Katie Sotier has been amazing. I think she offered six or eight different opportunities for staff to do that. We have had... God, now I'm drawing a blank. Lynda Mood Bell and Seeing Stars in some of our special ed programs have their trainings. We have had trainings for DIBELS and CKLA, our new curriculums down in the elementary world for literacy, and teachers who went through the training last year that like, can I join again? I said, of course you can. If you'd like a refresher, it's open. There's no limit. So we had some teachers do that as well. We've had math running records, so that's one of our data points for our elementary. Jenna Daniels did a training on that last week before she goes out of maternity leave, and several book studies. So it's been a very busy summer. We try to keep July hands-off, so June and August were very busy for us, and I started back in April, working on May, working on October 10th. So have some plans going forward for professional development through the year that I'll be sharing at a future workshop or meeting with you guys, so.
Awesome. Any questions? Excuse me. Whoa. Thanks so much for all your hard work. I know that I learned a lot when we had... When we met with the administrators again last week, because we learned a lot about... Just to touch upon what you just talked about in all the different programs, but learning how, especially the elementary, like, they just talked a little bit more in-depth about all these new programs and how they're going to benefit the kids moving up the pike. So just happy and excited about all the new changes. So thank you.
They've been working hard.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to new business, 2025-2026 school committee schedule.
Sure. A little late with this. Normally, this is an agenda I Normally, this is an agenda item for us back before the school year ends, so that we can look ahead with that, but better late than never, I guess. Here is a school committee meeting schedule. Typically, what we've done is, school committee meetings are held, usually held the first and third Monday of every month, and they usually start at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. Sometimes, what we've done in the last couple of years that I think has worked out well is that second meeting of the month oftentimes is dedicated to a workshop where we can really jump in-depth with a topic or something that is, something that I think we need more information on, dig deeper into doing that. And then, of course, we also have our budget process that really picks up into the end of January into February. So, sometimes that first Monday or third Monday becomes a holiday. That's the case when we get started in Labor Day. I remember when I first started, we never had a meeting in August, but we've also learned over time that it's important for us to be able to add one. That's why we're here today. And then, the first Monday in September is the Labor Day holiday, so we'll have back-to-back meetings, September eighth and September fifteenth. Those are usually good opportunities for us to have the opening of school in terms of our different schools, different levels, and different programming. So, we'll do that as regular meetings in September. And then, our meeting in October is on the sixth. The second meeting is the twentieth. That could be workshop-focused. November, we go November third and November seventeenth. That second workshop in November could also be a workshop. December, December first and December fifteenth, the second workshop there is usually dedicated to the superintendent's evaluation as a workshop format. In January, we start with the fifth, and then we'll meet after the Martin Luther King Holiday, a week after that on the twenty-sixth, and that's really when the budget process takes hold. And then, we'll meet on February second. We do have the school vacation in February, but we do have a meeting on Monday, the twenty-third, because that's usually where we're trying to approve our school budget, because it goes on to the city council in March. And then, back in March, we're back on the second and the sixteenth. The sixteenth could be more of a workshop focus. April is the sixth and the twenty-seventh, because of the school vacation at the end of April. Monday, we have two meetings, the fourth and the eighteenth, and then in June, typically we meet on the second Monday. That first one is always competing against senior activities and whatnot, and so the June eighth date is usually one that's after graduation that we're able to work on. So, that's what you have in front of you with it. Obviously, as we all know, there'll be different twists and turns that may come up in terms of other workshops or other executive sessions that might have to be able to schedule or some adjustments, but that's the schedule I'd like to put forth for your discussion and approval.
Who would like to make a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to approve the Sanford School Committee meeting schedule as presented.
I will second that.
Thank you, John. All in favor? Thank you so much. As a side, well, we'll move on, then I can bring it up. So, the school, I'm sorry, moving on to the Sanford School Department's mission, vision, and graduate portrait.
Yes. So, a lot of work has gone in, in terms of the school, updating the school department's mission, vision, and core principles. And so, this has been something that has been an area that we've been trying to work on. We really never got a lot of momentum, but we did have a workshop back in the end of April, and that workshop last April was focused on the mission, vision, and core principles. And so, I'm going to, in a second, or in a minute, after going over what we have in front of you this evening for a draft, I am going to go through and review the process of where we started and where we landed for that. So, the updated mission is prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower them to succeed in a rapidly changing world. Our vision is Sanford School Department's faculty and staff will create safe, inclusive learning environments where all students are supported and challenged to grow academically, personally, and socially. Sanford School Department's faculty and staff partner with families, community organizations, and students to strengthen learning, promote well-being, and build a sense of shared responsibility. And the Sanford School Department's faculty and staff will empower students to take ownership of their learning and contribute actively to their schools, communities, in a rapidly changing world. In terms of core principles and beliefs in learning, faculty, staff, families, and the community are essential partners in achieving our core principles and beliefs in learning. And those are in five areas. The first one is a learning, climate, and culture. Students build positive relationships and use their voice to drive engagement, motivation, and ownership of their learning. Students rise to high academic standards through personalized evidence-based approaches that support their individual needs. Students take pride in their learning and actively participate in their educational journey. Students balance academic excellence with their well-being and personal growth, and students are supported in realizing their full potential academically, socially, and emotionally. The next core principle is under future-ready skills development. Students develop critical thinking, effective communication, collaboration, adaptability and adaptability to face challenges and solve problems. Students build digital fluency and demonstrate innovative thinking in academics in real-world contexts. Students understand civic responsibility through active community engagement. Students acquire essential life skills, including time management, work ethic, and financial literacy to support their success beyond the classroom. And students demonstrate resilience and grit to persevere through challenges and setbacks. The next core principle is under the area of equitable access and accountability. Students have consistent access to opportunities, support, and resources that meet their individual needs and promote success. Students understand clear expectations and are held accountable for their own growth and achievement. Students are engaged in inclusive environments where every learner is respected, valued, and supportive. Adaptable learning systems is the next core principle. Underneath that, students benefit from systems that prioritize continuous improvement through innovation and flexibility. Students experience personalized learning that supports their strength, interests, and needs. Students are supported by learning environments that respond to evolving educational demands and future-ready expectations. And then, the last core principle is under community collaboration. Students benefit from a strong partnership between their school, families, businesses, and communities. Students make meaningful connections between education and real-world opportunities. Students will engage with local perspectives and enrich and personalize their learning experiences, and students grow to responsible local and global citizens through their community involvement and real-world application of their learning. As we get into this work, what we noticed is one of the requirements that Sanford High School has for their upcoming reaccreditation is the work around a portrait of a graduate. And so, we also took the opportunity to dig into that, and what we come up for a recommended portrait of a future graduate is that Sanford graduates will demonstrate the following competencies through real-world applications, community contributions, and their ability to navigate post-graduation transitions successfully, all while continuing to grow and contribute meaningfully to society. So, with the portrait, our students will be critical thinkers, innovators, and creative problem solvers. With that, we want our students to apply critical thinking, creativity, and innovation to solve problems, take initiative, and engage in thoughtful risk-taking. They identify and act on opportunities for positive change in their personal, professional, and community lives, preparing them to thrive in a variety of post-graduation pathways that include higher education, career training, entrepreneurship, or workforce entry. Our graduates will also be emotionally intelligent and collaborative. Our students develop empathy, strong communication skills, and the ability to work effectively in diverse teams and collective problem-solving environments. Our graduates will also be adaptable and resilient. They'll demonstrate their ability to adapt to change, persevere through challenges with grit, and pivot throughout their lives while maintaining a positive outlook. Our graduates will also be engaged in future-ready citizens. They'll understand their roles as responsible local and global citizens by actively contributing to their communities and demonstrating civic engagement and social responsibility. They will also possess financial literacy, personal accountability, and transferable skills, including effective communication, time management, and digital fluency that serve them across all areas of life. And finally, our graduates will be lifelong learners with a growth mindset. They'll pursue continuous learning and involvement beyond formal schooling, taking initiative in their personal and professional development. So, as you can see, there's a lot there. That just didn't fall from the sky. I'd like to take some time to review the process that was put in place. Initially, this was a goal that we had at the central office level to do that. And so, really, where we struggled was, what would we use for a starting point? Because as you can see, there's a lot there. So, the starting point that we used was a coming from a main Department of Education initiative called Measure What Matters. This was something that started to take place well over a year ago, and the main Department of Education set up a process and a listening tour that was statewide involving all stakeholders, involving students, teachers, staff, families, parents, the business community. All different stakeholders were represented and came together through a process to determine what is it that they wanted to see out of their education, something that would go oppositely beyond just test scores. And so, that report came out probably last February. That report came out, and it was quite in-depth, and so, we took that as a starting point, and through that, we distilled from that work a mission, a draft mission, a draft vision, and a draft core principles. And so, that was what we used as a starting point. We brought that to the school committee workshop in April. We've also brought it through our administrators to also get some initial feedback from that document. We got initial feedback from the school committee, and at that school committee workshop, I laid out a process and a timeline that would help us be able to go back and be able to bring forward an updated recommendation. That process included putting together a steering committee, a representative steering committee, and so, as you can see there on the screen, it is a pretty comprehensive steering committee. This was modeled, the Measure What Matters initiative from the main Department of Education. That's nice, but we wanted to take that work and say, what works for Sanford and what works for the Sanford community? And so, we had a steering committee that was made up of school committee members. Paula and Melissa represented the school committee, but we also had administrators, we had teachers, we had parents, we had PTA members, we had the business community, we had nonprofits, we had elected officials, we had statewide organizations that were also represented in terms of doing that. We had former school committee members, parents, and so, as we went through there, we also, most importantly, had students in terms of also coming from. So, that was the first thing we did with the steering committee. Our first meeting for the steering committee was held on May twentieth, and we held that meeting down at Sanford Regional Technical Center into the café, and we did a activity or a exercise that we came back and basically divided into groups and dug into what we had as far as the initial draft, and from that, we were looking at what was it that we liked about it? What were some of the things that we didn't like? What were some of the things that were unclear? And what were some of the things that were missing, that were missing? And so, we really used that to get feedback and recommendations. Out of that, we planned our first feedback loop. Our first feedback loop was going out in a survey, going out to our parents and going out to our staff. We sent out two separate surveys, so we could really come back to look at the results. As you can imagine, when you send that out at the end of May into June, with that, you're probably looking at, you're competing with a lot of other things that are going on. It's a busy time of year, we recognize that. Nonetheless, we also received what we felt was some very helpful feedback. The survey broke it down into each component, so there was the mission, and then there was an opportunity for people to talk about what they liked, what they didn't like, and then we broke it down, going beyond the mission to the vision, the core principles, the beliefs on learning, and also the portrait of a future graduate. We also had, in addition to looking at Measure What Matters, we also had some other examples for some other schools to come back to also kind of help us check off against each other in doing that. So, the steering committee came back together to look at those survey results and really dig into those, and that was something for us to say, okay, based on that feedback, what are some of the changes or suggestions that we have for the update? We dug into that as well, and then, from that is where we wanted to share that in a second feedback loop to staff and to our community. We used most of the month of July, where we were sending out this information. There were frequent reminders, I think the community was probably aware of hearing from me, just a reminder, just a reminder, and so, we got that through the end of July, and then we held our third steering committee meeting on August seventh, and through that, you can then also see where the agenda is and then some of the results of the survey. One of the things that we took away was, as we asked people to rate all the individual components, the majority, a strong majority, came back as strongly agree or agree, and then we came back and looked at the feedback based on that, and that is what we came up with, to be able to present to you that draft this evening for school committee discussion, and then also potentially with their approval. We were looking at a goal of trying to have this at least started for the beginning of our school year, whichever is, whatever action is taken by the school committee this evening, that if it is approved, I would recommend next steps, that we now look into presenting this to our staff as they come back on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, and also as they have the welcome back in the Performing Arts Center, and then also some branding that has to take place for us to be able to come back and be able to see how this is going to be able to be framed. What I would say too is, if you look at this, this document, there's a lot here. There are a lot of represented, there's a lot that's coming back, and I know that some of the feedback that we received in that second feedback loop was, hey, we may not be doing this right now, or we may not be reaching this particular standard or this level, and that's understandable. That's something for us, that this wasn't about us identifying what we're doing, this is us identifying what we want for our students to be able to come back is through their education, and this is something that we'd be able to use as our foundation, and then we'd be able to come back and look at, what are those areas that we are maybe not doing well, or as well as we should be, or maybe we're falling a little bit short? That's where we can take it and then build our strategic plans to be able to come back and address those areas. I wanted to say that because that was something, especially in that last steering committee meeting that came back, that you saw some of that feedback, that people looked at it. I don't think they were disagreeing with something, it was more about where we are and also looking at. That's a pretty big to-do in terms of what you're able to come back and looking at what we want to provide for our students and doing that for it. So, I don't know, Melissa, Paula were part of that. Amy was also able to pinch-hit for Paula in that last steering committee meeting, so I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add about the process or anything to go into detail that I may have missed in terms of at least updating the process.
So, being a part of that...
So being a part of that steering committee from the beginning, I would just say that the people in the room were all very productive, you know, professionals. We had a wide range of people from the community, parents included. And the involvement was, I mean, high energy, it was really good. And that very first meeting, just everybody had a say how it was broken down, how we went about that. You know, I think everybody in the room kind of did their, did their part throughout the process. But I would say that the, you know, just how well everybody handled it and how quickly we moved through this and the conversations and the, you know, yeah, just the suggestions and then the shifting. And it was very, it was, this document was very fluid and moved very, very well.
Yeah, we had, thank you, Melissa. We had CEOs from local businesses or businesses in the area. We had head of human resources from local businesses. We had people from higher education, the community college. And so I think you were able to have an opportunity where people were able to come back and provide their input in terms of being able to, what is it that we're looking for in our graduates? What is it that's important? I also think we were able to dovetail that work that we were doing and expand it to the Portrait of a Graduate. You'll see, as I went over that, there's some themes there that seem a little bit repetitive in terms of that, and we recognize that. But that's also a little bit by design in terms of those things that we're looking for, in terms of what we're looking for in our, in our students. Some of the other feedback that came back at that last, at the last steering committee meeting was, Sarah, if you can go back up to the draft of what you had up there first. One of the things that we talked about was the mission. That is something that we wanted to make sure we had the word "prepare" in there and also "empower." That was something that initially I think we were starting with just "empower." And then I think we were also focused on skills. And that's when we also made the adjustment throughout the process to add knowledge. The vision is something that we're looking for us as our faculty and staff for what we're able to provide for our students and our families and partners. And then down the next one, you'll see core principles and beliefs in learning. One of the things that came out of our last steering committee meeting was, we added faculty, staff, families, and the community are essential partners in achieving our core principles and beliefs in learning. If you see all those statements begin with students. And yes, we are very student-centered in terms of what we're looking for. But we also recognize that it's going, asking more than just putting this on to our students as well, that all of us, faculty, staff, families, and the community are all essential partners in being able to help with that. And then when it came time to the last section for the Portrait of a Future Graduate, a lot of that was coming back on how we laid that out in terms of the order of what we were looking for. We kind of had that order was a little bit mixed up and didn't flow. And then we were also looking at trying to hit the high points. You can see the, in bold, but then also support those of what that's going to look like in terms of some of those expectations for it. Any questions, comments, feedback?
Yes. So I agree with everything that was said regarding the work that went into this. I thought the committee was made up of a tremendous group of people, intelligent, thoughtful. I mean, everybody put so much work into it. The conversations were dynamic, and the dialogue was wonderful. There's nothing bad that can be said about that at all. I do think, my personal opinion is that I wish that we had had more teachers involved in the actual live process in that, in the committee, and possibly more students, but definitely more staff. And I, while I think that this is a great starting point, I think that there is still a lot of work that this document needs. I think in the same way that it was a huge committee that worked on this, and we collected every single possible piece of information and everything that a perfect student, you know, that a perfect student in a perfect school district could want and need and want to deliver, I think that it is very broad. And I think that it needs to be honed and it needs to be, so that it can be more clear and more concise. When I look at some of the examples that we were given from other school departments, like Yarmouth, Westbrook, Bangor, Bitterford, and South Portland, and others that I've worked on and others that I, we've looked at or researched throughout the years. One thing that I get from all of those that I don't really get from this, like I said, is the clarity and the concise message going through. When I read the other ones, they're, it's very clear. You have four things. You have what the district is going to do, what it promises to do, what the students can expect from the district, you know, what they're getting as a consumer. You have very clear guiding principles, you know, values and beliefs that are very clearly stated. And that is clearly the way that you then take this document and measure yourself against and measure decisions, ideas, policies, procedures, practices, everything against that. And I feel that this is too broad and says way too much at the same time that it just doesn't really say because it's so lofty and huge. And the last thing that I see that needs to be said and clearly is how the district will deliver the goods. I very much feel that this document is going to go on our website. And, you know, we're talking about having it at every single one of our meetings and, you know, staff is going to look to it and everything. And I do feel that as, if I'm going to be, you know, it's on the website and it's going to represent the district. And I just don't think it's clear enough. As a teacher looking to get a job at this, again, at this district, I would think, wow, this is, it's a lot, but at the same time, I'm not, I'm not getting it. And as a parent, I do feel that it's just, it's too much and it's too wordy. But that's, I know I'm probably the minority.
Well, we, it's good feedback. I guess we should go ahead and take a vote. I'll just add my two cents as someone who went to the, to the last meeting as a pinch hitter. I was super impressed with how much dialogue. I think the meeting, people probably anticipated it was going to be an hour, and I think we were there for almost three hours. So I really appreciate, like, there was a lot of discussion, pretty much line by line, definitely for the mission, vision, and the other ones. Is it a little wordy? A little. But I, I left very good with this. There's a couple minor tweaks that I personally would like to see and I think had talked with you all about it. So I'm personally okay to go ahead and vote for this.
I just have a quick question. On the other schools that you're speaking of, are you just looking at mission and vision? And, and not, do they have a core principles of belief of learning and stuff like that when you were looking at, because I don't, I'm not sure of the reference? You know, and the Portrait of a Graduate? Because I kind of think, I know we were starting, mission and vision was the thing, and then we just wanted to, this is more of an elaboration? So is it the mission and vision that isn't hitting home for you? Sorry, I'm just trying to gauge what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, I guess, you know, I've, I've struggled with this because, like I said, it's a tremendous amount of work and it's, it's great. It just, to me, it just paints like this utopian, perfect. And how are we going to measure this? How are we going to deliver all of this? And how are we going to make sure that we really are? This is a lot to promise. And there's a lot that we're saying that the students are going to do. And, you know, we only have so much control over this. There's a lot that we're hoping that there's the right percentage or the right motivation and discipline and accountability and responsibility. And I feel, again, like it's too wordy. And so some of the, to answer your question, it's just, it's clearer. You know, you have a core principle, but you have an actual core principle listed. Like, a core value would be strong innovative leadership. Those are just the values, the things that we're looking for, that we're going to support in our students, that we're trying to shoot for. And then after that, it's, you know, if you look at the one from Westbrook, they do explain, much like we explain here, strategic priorities, but they're very focused. And it's, it's shorter and more concise and more direct. This is a lot, a lot, you know? And there is different ways of separating it, like, you know, Yarmouth has core values, and under each core value that's listed, it's got one sentence that explains exactly what that is, you know? Then it's got a portrait of the student, but it's, it's not like a written paper. It's just concise things. What are we looking for? Because we need to be able to look at it and say, okay, we are doing that, bam. We are doing that, bam. And when I'm a parent and I'm looking to move to this district, I want to know what I'm getting. I, I don't, this is too much. And so I would say that next steps would be, you know, I, like I said, I appreciate the community and everybody that worked on this. I do wish that it had been sort of more organic and more personal and more, you know, the people that are working within the district that know our students, the teachers that are there doing all the work and the school committee, you know? We're the ones that are supposed to be in charge of the mission and vision. And so I would say next steps would be, you know, school committee to grab this and hone it and, and make it complete and make it done. I just, I don't feel that this is done, in my opinion. But I'm one of five.
So there are a couple of, I, I think, I mean, is there a bullet point that might be an extra or something? Maybe, there's a couple, you know? But for me, I think that it does say what we want our students to aspire to. And, you know, of course, we have work to do and not everybody's going to be perfect in this Portrait of a Graduate or, you know, in this document. But I think it does give a message of what we're trying to, what we're trying to put out into the world for human beings. I do have a couple of changes, but I think I, I want to do a discussion on that. But I want to make a motion to approve this mission and vision, core principles, and Portrait of a Graduate as presented, and then have discussion on a couple of things.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion.
So I love your feedback and honesty, Paula, on that. And like I said, maybe there's a bullet point that, or two here that it's extra. But for me, especially, I was closing my eyes when Matt was just reading this because I haven't heard it, right? Like, it's different when you read it and you kind of skim things. And I haven't, I haven't actually heard anybody say it. So with that, the mission, I think the words "them to succeed" is kind of clunky. And if we could just make that say "success," so it would read, "Prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower success in a rapidly changing world," instead of "them to succeed," which is basically saying the same thing. I just think it'll also be prettier on paper or on posters. Under the vision, second bullet point, I think adding "build resilience" in there. So partner with families, communities, community organizations, and students to build resilience, strengthen learning, and promote well-being, and build a sense, or promote well-being and build a sense of shared responsibility. I think that's important, especially in this rapidly changing world. I think that's, you know, kids need to know how to shift and be resilient to different things, outcomes that, or things that come along in their lives. And then the other thing that I heard, as I, like I said, I was listening, the third bullet, it says "to their school community," and I think it should say "in." And I don't know, when, when Matt read that, I feel like empower students to take ownership of their learning and contribute actively to their, I feel like it should contribute actively in their school communities in a rapidly, I mean, minor, minor. But when he said, I think it's because he said "to" and then "to" again, so it kind of, whatever, it's not a huge deal. But I think that's, I did, the last, under community collaboration, the last two bullets are, I feel like the, the second to last could just go away. Because again, as I was listening with my eyes closed, I felt like he said the same thing kind of twice or, you know, which I wasn't even going to mention, but now that Paula said this, it's kind of lengthy, why not? But that's it, as far as.
The third bullet in the community collaboration?
Yep, the third one down, oh, sorry, yes. Last, second to last, but the third one in that, I just feel like those last two kind of say the same thing. And, you know, when you said it, I was like, oh, he said the same thing twice when I was listening to it. But I didn't catch that until just now. Like, I didn't, yeah.
So the third one out or the fourth one out?
The third one out. I, yeah. But like I said, I just kind of started listening, and then I was like, oh, I'm just going to close my eyes and hear what he's saying and see if it, anything jumps out at me, and those were the things.
So I agree with the first three. I think that's, we, we had, we had talked about that offline. So agree with changing to empower success in a rapidly changing world. And then adding in the vision, the second, and, and students, build resilience and strengthen learning, promote well-being, and so on. Empower students to take ownership of their leadership and contribute actively in their schools. Yeah, that's fine, yeah, grammatical. I just hope it doesn't really change, but I'm definitely not a EOA major.
I mean, I could be wrong on that, too, but it sounded.
So those three, I'm comfortable in voting today on. As for the fourth one.
And that one doesn't make a difference. Like I said, it was just as I was listening, I felt, kind of sounded like he said the same thing a couple of times there.
Yeah, I'm okay thinning it with that one as well, not to take away from the work and the discussion that went on for that, because I wasn't there, so.
Well, and it says it here, under adaptive learning, too. It also says, experience a personalized learn, so I just, like I said, as he, I was just, my eyes were closed, and it just sounded like he said, like that thing said the same thing twice on that one. That was it.
So just to continue discussion, John, Lisa, Paula, any, any more to add? Or John, Lisa, give us your feedback.
Yeah, and as you know, I was not part of this process, so trusting the process, seeing the finished result last, last week. I think everyone did an excellent job capturing all, you know, what, what our goals are, what our values are, what our core values are. I think Paula, you know, Paula definitely has a point that sometimes it can seem wordy, but I, I'm still going to vote for this. And I think that there's opportunities, I think, think about some of the things that Paula was talking about, when we're branding this, when we're presenting this to the broader public, I think there's opportunities for us maybe not to get lost in the verbiage so much, but, you know, hit our main points, what, what, what is the, at the core of it. And so, you know, I personally am going to vote for this. Trust the process that it went through. I think it was vetted. The list of people that were on there, I think were diligent. And I know, I know there's a lot of hard work, and I know everyone, you know, all you folks, and I just appreciate that. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
So on that list of those who were participating in that steering group, there were teachers, and they felt comfortable with this. So, and I'm, sorry, Paula, I don't mean to put you on the spot. You were on that steering committee. Did you not feel heard with your concerns? Or was it like an afterthought you, you processed since the last meeting and now, now you have these concerns?
No, I think it's taken a while because I did, you know.
It's a lot to process.
Yeah, and I'm trusting the process, right? And appreciating that, that it is stakeholders and that, like John said, the word "capture" is perfect. and that, like John said, the word "capture" is perfect. It captured a giant essence of what it is that we all would like our students to have, you know? Um, and I appreciate that. I, I, I guess part of me disagrees and I had mentioned, but it was sort of like lost in the conversation when we were talking about starting this process, is that I think it should have been more organic and more personal. And while I do know that there were teachers in the committee, um, we've often talked about how, I don't know, we need to have more dialogue with our own teachers. And I know that teachers always feel like they're not really heard and, you know, all those dynamics and everything. But just having it be more personal, just within our... And I, and I do think that it's necessary to have the input of businesses and to understand, you know, what they're looking for and all of that. But in the second meeting, I, when we were talking about this, I know, um, some of the business people spoke up and I had said, I think it's a wonderful start. But I think, because they were saying, this is great, this is exactly what we're looking for, this is exactly what we need, and this is what we're looking in the business community. And my response to that was, um, I understand that and I appreciate that, but we're doing a mission and statement for, and we're outlining principles and we're outlining, you know, uh, values and, and what it is that we're going to give and how we're going to do it to and educate, to a school, not a business, to a school that's filled with students and teachers that are doing the work and, and not a corporation. And so, I don't know. I'm, I'm just struggling with all of this. And so I'm, uh, even now, I'm thinking, do I vote yes or do I vote no? Because I do appreciate this process and I think this is a great start. So if I say no, what am I saying? But if I say yes, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it, the way that it is.
I will just add again, just the one that only went to one meeting. Um, the, that last meeting I was at, they went through the survey results and one of the surveys was staff results. And there was quite a bit of staff results with what it is today.
And the staff concerns were all addressed?
I thought it was a very positive survey in the sense of what this current draft is.
Do you remember any of the types of concerns that were on the staff?
If, if you look in, in the stuff that's been provided, I did give you the surveys and they break that down into the comments. One of the things that came back, and I think it's similar to what Pa- Paula was talking about, was there was a concern about, hey, we're not doing this. Or, hey, this is, th- this is, uh, this is a lot. And I think what I counseled the steering committee with was, it's okay if we're not doing, that, this, what do we-
We're saying this is what perfection looks like and we're striving for, not what-
This is what we're striving for and this is what we want. And this work will then guide us to help us better understand where are the areas we're doing well, but where are the areas we may be falling short of? What are the areas we have to shift to transition to? And doing that, that was a theme that came up, I think, you know, from our staff, uh, but also the community as well, was like, whoa. You know, this is probably, no, uh, I'm not sure about those other communities and how they went about their process to be able to do that. I know Yarmouth's, I don't know this latest one, but the one before that, they did an 18-month process. And we talked about that timeline for us as probably not being, um, ideal or reasonable. But I also know that this is one of those, when you start looking at bringing together who we did in the steering committee and looking at that starting point for Measure What Matters to Come Back, you probably got more involvement here from other groups that you may never have gotten before in terms of that. And so where's that balance of trying to make sure we're listening to our staff? Paula is absolutely right, that is, that's something that's super important to be critical. But at the same time, what are we, what are we looking for, for our students? And what are we looking for for preparing them for after they leave us, uh, for that?
I, I will say on that too, Matt, that, um, and you'll remember that in that last steering meeting, um, staff was like, this is where we're going to start to create our processes to, you know what I mean? Like, like instead of it being, this is where we, we are or where we should be, a lot of the staff was like, yeah, we need this so we can then do the things to, you know what I mean, this is our, this is going to be our guidance to get us, you know, moving towards this direction. So they were talking about creating processes based on what we, what, you know, this beautiful, uh, stu- you know, portrait of a graduate we have here. Um, so that, those were talked about. And then the other thing was, um, yeah, that's, that was most of the staff feedback is, like, this is a lofty goal, kind of a thing, which, you know, we want that, you know? In my opinion.
And, um, I, I agree that it's a lofty goal and I agree that it's something that we need to, I, I guess where I'm stuck, I, I agree that it's what we should be checking ourselves against and this is lofty and this is what we want to be moving towards. I guess what I'm uncomfortable with is saying, okay, here it is and we're going to go ahead and use it now. And this is what's going to go on our website and we're going to, like, it's, it just doesn't seem done. And so that's where I'm stuck. If it was something where we're going to be working on it and sort of pulling it and honing it and making it... Because this is something that, um, like, the students that were in the committee said, these are sentences and words and phrases that you want the students to adopt as well. You want this to sink into the culture and climate of the school. You want teachers to be able to say, you know, this lesson or this behavior or this whatever is, goes directly to that particular value, that particular belief that we have. That, and again, it's too wordy.
So if you have this portrait of a future-ready graduate on your webs, on our website, and a student is graduating from Sanford High School and they read this and they feel that this does not define them, they, they don't meet this definition, are they feeling that they have failed or that our school has failed them?
What I'm thinking too is sort of like a parent looking at this and saying-
Or, or a parent saying, has this school failed my child because they don't meet this?
Or a graduate looking and saying, like-
I'm asking, I'm not a-
Right, or that, I'm asking too, like, as a student-
I'm devil's advocate, I guess.
Check, I've developed critical thinking. Check, effective communication. Check, collaboration, adaptability, face challenges, solve problems, build digital fluency, demonstrate innovative thinking in academic and real-world context, understand civic responsibility through active community engagement. Like, it's a long checklist of every single possible thing.
Sure, I mean, I can, I can see a student graduating, passing, meeting all of the milestones that they need, meeting their exact number of community service requirement hours and no more than necessary, but maybe not demonstrating civic engagement. Um, and maybe not some of these other things.
So we actually did talk about that at the last meeting as well. And we, I believe it was that last meeting that we added, um, their ability in this beginning of the portrait of a graduate, so we, we did go back and, and make sure that we were talk, you know, that we can, added verbiage in here and that's maybe even part of the reason why it's a little bit lengthy, um, to say your capabilities or, you know, we did a lot of talking about, you know, student A and student B, this port, you know, these things may not be as extensive for student A versus student B. So I think we added their ability in here. So we were trying to put verbiage in there to say, you know, you're going to develop these skills, but not all at the same level, which is-
So you've given them the, the tools. You've given them the tools. They may not be using them yet, but they, but they will have the tools. Okay, so that's covered.
And, and that was part of why that meeting went three hours. Because there was a lot of detailed, depth conversations, sort of playing devil's advocate, sort of like, well, this type of learner, they, you know? And so it was, again, very thoughtful when we were going line by line. Um, so with that said, um, I would like to put this to a vote, um, just, because I feel like we could just keep going around and we've already sort of done that process with a lot of people. Um, so I would like to, I'll make the recommendation, I guess.
I think we do have a motion already there-
Yeah, and a second.
-to get us started.
Yes, so I'd like to-
Now we're going to make edits.
Right, so I'd like to make a, um, a amendment to my motion to approve. Um, the amendments being the, change the mission to, instead of them to succeed, to the word "success". So it reads once again, "Prepare all students with future-ready skills and knowledge to empower success in a rapidly changing world." Um, second amendment would be, "Partner with families, community organizations and students too", and then add "build resilience, strengthen learning, promote well-being", um, and bullet point two of the vision. And then, uh, third amendment is the third bullet point under vision, just changing that second word "to" to the word "in", um, so it's "in their school communities". And then my, the final amendment would be to remove that third bullet in the core principles under community collaboration, the third bullet, just get rid of the student engage with local perspective, that enrich and purse because it's a, it's a duplicate of multiple areas. So I would like to make, I would like to amend my motion to approve the mission, vision, core principles and portrait of a graduate as amended and changed, as in my, yeah.
I will second, um, this recommendation with those four amendments. Any further discussion? Thank you for withdrawing. I apologize.
Nope, that's okay. We're getting to where we need to.
Okay.
Similar to this vision, we're getting to where we need to.
All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, perfect. So we have a new mission and vision for Sanford School Department. And thank you to everybody who took all that time and effort. I would just like to add to this that, um, I would like for this mission and vision to be sort of revisited or, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Again, I have word retrieval problems today. Um, that we're sort of refreshing it with eyes, new eyes, every three years perhaps, so that we don't blink and 15 years go by and we have the same mission and vision. So I would, I don't know if we can add that, that's my own. Maybe we can put that to a vote later on. But that would just be my feedback, is that we become like, sort of like bylaws in nonprofits that you, every so many years, you need to have come back, revisit it and have everybody look at it. So that's just my feedback, um, for this.
I think, I think revisiting it or, or having sections of, of folks that revisit it, um, because it is organic, right? I mean, or it's, it could be more organic, but it's, it's a living document, right? Sort of like the Constitution, there's amendments that are made, taken off, there's adaptations based on what we're dealing with in the time. And, you know, I think some of those concerns are, are valid, right? And so, and maybe even breaking it off in chunks, right? We're going to look at the vis- just the vision, right? Then we're going to look at, you know, learning climate and culture. Over time, you can kind of get a more perfect document.
Perfect, okay. So moving on to financials with our very own Cheryl Fornia. We are looking forward to this. Now, do we have fun clip arts?
It's not budget time. So, here we go. So this is a, a strange time for me because I am actually, um, working June already is almost done and I'm already working July and August. So my brain is all over the place when I sit here and I'm like, oh, I'm going back to May. So, here we go.
However, we hope that you've enjoyed some of your summer.
I have, enjoyed a little bit of it. My busy time is August here. Um, so let's hear you. So, um, right now, we are sitting, or in May, we're sitting at about, um, $821,000 below budget for expenses and we're running about $2.4 million above last year. A lot of that above last year is actually, um, mostly due to the extra payroll and the timing of that. Revenue, we're running about $1.5 million more than last year and that is, of course, uh, the majority of that is our EPS or the ED279 revenue. Uh, federal grants worth at $2.4 million worth of revenue and $2.2 million worth of expense, which is always good. We're more revenue than expenses. Um, and that was finishing up some catch-up from the prior year. Uh, enterprise fund, we're running at $2.8 million for revenue and $2.9 million in, um, expense. Um, I'm trying not to interject my June in here. Um, and then for other grants, uh, revenue of $885,000 in revenue and $811,000 in expenses. And a lot of that is because of the RUS grant and the timing of that. And, um, so, um, that's post of that. Um, so when we get on to, uh, Article One, um, we're running about $179,000 below budget as of May and we're running, um, $530,000 above last year. Um, and Article Two, we're running about $11,000 below budget and, um, $1.3 million in, um, between last year and this year. A lot of that is to do with, um, that's a majority of our employees is under that category in Article Two. Um, Article Three, we're running about half a million dollars, uh, below budget and $233,000 below, uh, above last year. And so, um, I could say so much about June. And then, um, Article Four, um, a lot of that is $44,000 of, um, uh, below budget. A lot of that has to do with, um, a lot of our stipends get paid out in June. And so we're running about $5,000 more than last year. Article Five, um, we're running about $81,000, $81 compared to budget. So you can't get any closer than that. And, uh, $74,000 below last year. So that is running rate true to storm. Article Six, um, we're running about $53,000 below budget and, um, $13,000 above last year. A lot of that is, um, our audit bill did not come in until July instead of in May usually, which is our interim. So that you'll see showing up in June. That brings us back up. Uh, Article Seven, um, is, we're running about $39,000 below budget and, um, $53,000 above last year. They will end up right there, right at that $39,000 at year-end. Um, that is the admin assistant change that we had at the high school, the difference in health insurance. Uh, Article Eight is transportation. We're running about $16,000 below budget. Um, we have a lot of expenses that come in right at the end of the year, um, trick catching up because you're always running one month behind. And, um, that one is, um, definitely coming out at about $20,000 in June above budget. But, um, all of it is pretty much in the special ed division where that rate went up quite a bit and it was, um, we ran over a little bit on $20,000, which is like 0.1% of our budget. So it wasn't huge. Article Nine, we're running right about, a budget of $5,000 and running $265,000 above last year. And they are fully staffed for the first time, so knock on wood, everybody. Um, Article Ten, um, is debt that is, comes at zero dollars difference because that one's easy. And Article Eleven, we're running about $29 compared to budget. So that one's another good one that's right there. And running about $25,000 above last year and that's mostly due to bringing, um, Sarah onto this group, into this grouping also. Um, adult education is running, uh, $746 compared to budget and $14,000 above last year. So that is running rate true in Form Two. And that is the May financials.
Wonderful. Any questions for Cheryl?
I make a motion to approve the May 2025 financials as presented.
Perfect. All in favor? All in favor? Wonderful. Thank you so much, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Forward to the next one. All right, moving on, there is no old business, and now we will go to resignations and retirements.
Sure. So as we get to this part of the agenda, at the June meeting, the school committee gave me the ability to hire over the summer, so you're going to see, this is probably lengthy in terms of all the different pieces, just because you're talking the last few months. Resignations, Brittany Burke, art teacher, Carl J. Lamb, moving closer to home. Deanna Cousins, special ed teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Ashley Decourt, Ed Tech Two at Carl J. Lamb. Lindsay Gleason, kindergarten educational tech two at Carl J. Lamb. Karen Gelber, kitchen personnel. Marcia Renney, administrative assistant. Deb Smith. So as we checked in, Marcia is formally now retiring. And Deb Smith, longtime kindergarten classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Both Marcia and Deb, we can't thank them enough for all of their contributions over the years to the Sanford School Department. Aleah Studer, Ed Tech One, self-contained. Tasha Spencer, Ed Tech Two, self-contained. Margaret Chase Smith. Alyssa Avril, social studies at the high school. James Bennett, Ed Tech Three at the high school. Kelly Foley is girls lacrosse coach. Maria Frichette, kitchen personnel. Melissa Kleinschmidt, English teacher at the high school. Magnus Lewis, the varsity indoor track coach and outdoor assistant track coach. Mike Bailey, assistant principal, Sanford Middle School. Want to also thank Mike for all of his efforts to the Sanford School Department over the many years as a teacher and administrator at Sanford Middle School. Mike is going to the Center of Technology in Bitterford to be their assistant director. Wishing him the best of luck. Justin Barker, Ed Tech Three at the middle school. Nate Mann, middle school boy soccer coach. Colleen Cartararo, field hockey coach at the middle school. Erica Scorano, band teacher at the middle school. Priscilla Lane, kitchen personnel at Pride. Kathleen Meyer, special ed teacher, self-contained at Pride. Sarah Tremblay, Ed Tech Two at Bridge. And Eric Benham, gifted and talented teacher for the elementary schools. Oh, I did. Yep. I was like, I didn't see that. Well, actually, it's right there. I just missed it. Also, special ed teacher, Penelope Ricatelli at the middle school. And then there are some appointments to announce. Nicole Dagel, kitchen personnel sub. Amy Moran, admin assistant for food service. Diane Mallon, is rehired as school year only admin assistant at Carl J. Lamb. We did have a number of people that helped us in the extended school year program this past summer, so this would have been after our June meeting, but now extended school year is over. But very much want to recognize and thank Deanna Cousins, Susan Demers, Jessica Garnow, Beth Gauthier, Sierra Goodwin, Julia Rose, Jared Utgard, Debbie Little, and Ryan Mullet, Sean Rowe, Heather Van Geeson, and Allison Walker. Couple other appointments. Brianna Cludier, kindergarten Ed Tech Two. Cassandra Lutterville, Ed Tech Two, Ed Tech Three at Lamb. Nicole Lynch, Ed Tech Three at Carl J. Lamb. Susan Moran, Ed Tech One, self-contained at Carl J. Lamb. Michelle Geharn, special ed Ed Tech Two at the MCS. Bryant Scolli, student success center at the high school. Katie Spulick, summer substitute for kitchen personnel. Tamara Wood, kitchen personnel at the high school. Olivia Henry, a long-term substitute for English Language Arts at the middle school. Kayla Molton, school year administrative assistant at the middle school. Lisa Nickerson, Ed Tech Three for the SEAL program at the middle school. Tyler Swinnon, kitchen personnel at the middle school. And Barbara Tucker, kitchen personnel at Pride. Do have some Schedule B, Schedule C, and Schedule D appointments. The first one has been removed. Michael DiStefano is not being, that is a mistake with that. Other appointments for B, C, and D appointments. Ryan Geary, varsity volleyball coach. Marty Kane, head field hockey coach. Ronnie Rossi, Lontane Kirsten, golf coach. Dave McCall, girls head soccer coach. John Morgan, varsity boys basketball coach. Dana Newton, assistant varsity football coach. Anthony Nugent, freshman football coach. Bryant Scolli, assistant football coach. Nate Smith, cross-country coach. Lindsey Strout, assistant cross-country coach at the high school. Taylor Tar, girls assistant JV varsity soccer, JV soccer. Vicky Thomas, girls soccer coach at the middle school. Haley Wood, assistant JV field hockey coach. Katrina Woodard, field, fall high school cheering coach. Nick Works, assistant football coach at the high school. Megan Kaluppi, assistant cross-country coach at the middle school. Aaron Fraser, field hockey coach at the middle school. Chris Kumpka, boys soccer coach at the middle school. And Christine Penny, cross-country coach. We also have a number of transfers to announce those. Cindy Donovan, moving just from kitchen personnel at the middle school to Carl J. Lamb. Ben Gagnon, from a substitute Ed Tech to a, from a sub to an Ed Tech Three in the resource room. Reagan Nason, from Ed Tech to long-term sub at Carl J. Lamb. Diane Tapscott, from our food service administrative assistant, moving over to the year-round administrative assistant position at Carl J. Lamb. Leanne Elwell, substitute, moving from sub to a special education Ed Tech at MCS. Katie Gray, moving from the middle school nurse to the high school nurse. Joss Allen, moving from eighth grade math at the middle school to grade five teacher. Lakeisha Anderson is from an Ed Tech Two at the middle school to an Ed Tech Three at the middle school. Nicole Scorano, kitchen personnel at the middle school, increasing her hours at the middle school. Joshua Hisong, the, moving from six-seven band teacher to seven-eight band teacher. Joelle Landry, from the lead kitchen personnel at the middle school to the production distribution kitchen manager at the middle school. Kim Minchin, from title math teacher at MCS to the eighth grade math teacher at the middle Micaiah Williams, seventh grade English Language Arts at the middle school to eighth grade English Language Arts at the middle school. Marie Douglas, from kitchen personnel at CGL to, moving over to Pride and an increase in hours. Debbie Little, from resource room, Ed Tech Two at Pride to kindergarten Ed Tech at Pride. Katie Spulick, from kitchen personnel at CGL to the satellite kitchen manager at Pride. Judy Belanger, production kitchen manager at MCS, moving to the district manager for the pre-K through grade four. And Linda Stone, she'll do the grades five through 12, moving to that as well. And then, these are nominations. As I mentioned, people have been hired. We still will have to take formality to have the approval, but joining us this fall, Carly Erickson, elementary art teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Isabel Herbert, grade four classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Emma Lacon, special education teacher, self-contained at Carl J. Lamb. Jennifer Martin, special ed resource room teacher at Lamb. Miranda Montgomery, kindergarten teacher, transferring over from a special education Ed Tech Three at Lamb. Michaela Flag, Title One Math Interventionist. Jessica St. Clair, special ed teacher at MCS. Gino Bukazini, special ed teacher at the high school. Autumn Forsing, English Arts teacher at the high school. Matt Willett, math teacher, transferring from Ed Tech Three to math teacher. Matt was in a long-term sub position there at the end of last year. Matthew Pascucci, English Arts, English Language Arts teacher at the high school. Ian Ryan, social studies teacher at the high school. Madison Vaschan, English Language Arts teacher at the high school. Andrew Johnson, a multi-lingual learner teacher, high school, middle school. Christina Knoll, seventh grade English Language Arts at the middle school. Keegan Meredith, grade seven and eight resource room teacher at the middle school. Jacob Morisi, band teacher at the middle school. Tatiana Murphy, life skills teacher at the middle school. Gabrielle White, school nurse at the middle school. Nick Hammond, engineering and architectural design instructor at SRTC. Carrie Hansen, the information technology and network instructor at SRTC. Carrie's transferring from his role as our director of technology. John Peppin, plumbing instructor at SRTC. And Kristen Perry, baking and pastry instructor at SRTC. So as I mentioned, we will need at least a formal vote to accept the nominated professional staff as presented.
Woo! That's a lot of hiring. Great job. I will make a recommendation to accept the nominated professional staff as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Paula just stepped out, so we had a quorum, so we're good.
And then, there are some administrators to formally announce. Joe Mistracchio as principal, Sanford Middle School. Joe's moving from the assistant principal's position to principal. Michael Edgar, moving into an assistant principal position at the middle school. And Lindsay Pendleton, also at the assistant principal at middle school, as I mentioned. With Joe moving and Mike Bailey moving, those are the two openings there. And then Lisa Joyner, replacing Carrie Hansen as the technology director for the district. So, once again, we'll need some recommendation to approve those nominations.
I'll make a motion to approve the nominations as presented.
All second. Perfect. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Moving on to policies and procedures. Hello, Mr. B.
Good evening. I have one policy for you this evening for a first reading, and that is Policy KSF, Community Use of Sanford Public Schools Facilities. The Community Use of Sanford Public Schools Facility Policy KSF was last revised in 2018. The minor changes proposed prioritize the needs of our district events and activities while aiming to protect our facilities and equipment and maximize revenue from our outside events. The changes, there are three major changes in there. First one was, in the event that our equipment needs to be used, requiring a staff person, increase the cancellation days for outside rentals from 30 days to 60 days, and clarify in the role of the custodian with our facilities. The fee schedule is also linked in the agenda there under the executive session, and I recommend to accept the first reading of Policy KSF.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading for Policy KSF. I did have one quick thing to mention, if somebody wants a second.
I will second.
Okay, so discussion, this is the one where, you know, the custodial is required, that verbiage there, and we wanted to make sure we're adding something that the custodians, while there, are not moving things. This is the one, right, where we're going to put something in there where they're not, we're going to help people unpack their vehicles or anything like that. So that was the only thing, I just wanted to mention that.
Just to remind, we did have a policy committee meeting where these, that's what Melissa's referencing, is in the policy committee meeting, that was brought up, that right now, it was brought in there because sometimes people renting our facilities expect us to also provide the help for them to be able to come back and move some of their stuff. And so, this was just something more of, kind of correcting that in terms of defining what the role of the custodians are. I don't know if they purposely were looking at it, but it did come into the idea that that was coming to be the expectation, and so we felt like we wanted to put something in the policy.
Okay.
So, yeah, I still have my motion to accept the first reading of this policy.
I'll second it.
And I can second it, because I had seconded it before. So, I'll, you're making it with the, with, you're making another motion with the adjustments that you made, as a side note.
Right. So in the second reading, there, before we finalize, yeah. Yeah. So, so moving forward as a first reading, but before final approval, or this is adopted unofficially, there will be that little bit on there. That's all it was.
Okay. So all in favor? Perfect.
The following policy, JJIF, Management of Concussions and Other Head Injuries, is presented to you this evening for a second reading. Policy-
Steve, can I, do we want to approve the fee schedule, or is that part of that as well? I just want clarification.
Fee schedule will come back for a second reading in the next, it's part of that as well.
That was part of that. Okay. So we approve that in the fee schedule. Okay.
Policy JJIF, Regarding the Management of Concussions and Other Head Injuries, has been updated to align with the latest guidance from the Maine Department of Education. The revised policy incorporates current best practices and recognizes that students may suffer concussions during any activity during the school day or outside of school. Our old policy really focused primarily on athletics. This broadens that scope to make sure it covers any concussions that can happen anywhere in our schools, whether it be on the recess, on the bus. Key changes include expanding coverage for, like I just said, to incorporate activities beyond athletics, updating staff training requirements, revising protocols for handling concussions, adding a data collection component, and other main minor language updates, and I recommend approval.
I recommend we accept the second reading of Policy JJIF.
Any discussion? No? All in favor? Wonderful. Thank you.
And I will have a slew of policies the next time we meet for you.
And just to clarify, the community use of Sanford Public School facilities, including the fee schedule, are we doing the second reading at next?
Yep.
Meeting?
On the eighth.
On the eighth, on September eighth. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, items for future agenda. I don't have any items for the future agenda, however, I do want to just add a sidebar. There's been, I feel like quite a, not a ton, but I've seen more and more people asking for the school calendar on social media. If you, for the millions that are watching, if you were to go to the Sanford Schools website and you literally scroll down like a hair, it actually says their school department, like, calendar, and you just click it and it magically is there. I think people were struggling trying to find it on the website. I myself was also struggling to find it on the website, but voila, it is there, with just a click of a button and a move of the mouse. So, it is there. Let us know if you cannot find it.
Say that again? Right on the website?
Right, right on the website, if you, when you go to SanfordSchools.org. Oh, thanks so much, Sarah, for pulling that up.
Yeah, it's one of the little red tab, little red, yeah, boxes of all the things.
Will you put it on the screen for everybody? We're going to put it on the screen for everybody to see. So she goes to Sanford School, or Sanford.org, correct? And then, right there. Voila, right there for everybody to see. So, it is there, everyone. Perfect.
And I think, just so people know, our, we're preparing a Sanford Spotlight that's focused on back-to-school information, to include that link in it as well. So I think you'll, that'll come out, we'll have a lot of information all in one place for people to help with their back-to-school planning.
Does anyone else have any items for future agendas? No? I'm not going to be a popular person, but I had, did bring up our dress code policy with the administrators, just wanted to, you know, parents, just know that when we send our students to school, myself included, that we are dressing them for success, and anything that they would wear to a workplace, or you would wear to a workplace, is what is appropriate at school. So that's just a little side note, as you do your school shopping. All right, calendar announcements.
So, next Monday, we do have some school committee executive sessions. These will be student hearings. We're looking at three of them, as students have completed their plans to return to school before the school year begins. Those are, we'll have those scheduled between, starting at 10:30, and we hope to be finished by 12:30. So that's next Monday, 10:30 to 12:30. As I already mentioned, the new teacher orientation is Tuesday, the 26th. We also have insert- We also have in-service days coming up on the 27th and 28th for our staff. I mentioned the open houses that are also going on already before school starts. I mentioned the beginning of school dates. School will start after the Labor Day holiday, which is Monday, September 1st. And our two school committee meetings in September, just a reminder, there's Monday, the 8th and Monday, the 15th. We'll do back-to-back, but we'll have a lot of opening of school focus on the different schools and programs presenting.
All right. I will make a recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 5:51.
I'll second.
Awesome. All in favor? Perfect. Thank you all for watching. Have a great evening.